Can't make it to the museum during the day? Come for an evening visit during Friday evening hours. The museum is open until 9:00 PM on Fridays, and admission prices remain the same. Looking for a great way to cool off this month? Artists on Santa Fe Gallery is featuring gorgeous oceanic paintings by guest artist Tatiana Jametti. Plan your visit by going to artistsonsantafay.com for a full list of gallery times. Woody Fisher Kitchen and Bar is nestled in one of the oldest remaining structures in Denver's iconic Union Station neighborhood. Historic Hose House Number One. It was one of the first fire stations in Denver. Join us for our live music series. Whether by virtue of his lyrics, his live performances, or the infuriating line he seems to occupy between canny and total fraud, Father John Misty has cultivated a rare space for himself in the musical landscape, that of a real enigma. Don't miss this unique performance with Your Colorado Symphony. Experience Denver Botanic Gardens without the crowds. This therapeutic horticulture program is intended to allow exploration and learn about other sensory-based programming that will inspire curiosity and awaken the senses. The Centennial State celebrates its 146th birthday on Monday, August 1st with a free event at the History Colorado Center. Bring your friends and family because it's time to party. Engage with art, explore onsite activities, and experience exhibitions on view, all while enjoying free admission. Advanced ticket reservations are encouraged. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week. Welcome to Your Denver City Council. Please stand by. Full coverage of Your Denver City Council begins now.
There is no unfinished business from the prior session. There are two proclamations being read this evening. Councilmember Black, will you please read Proclamation 22-0878?
Yes, I will, Madam President, thank you. Recognizing the extraordinary career of Brendan Hanlon. Whereas this month marks the close of Brendan Hanlon's inspiring 20-year career with the city and county of Denver, and whereas from his first day as a budget analyst with the city in 2002, and shortly thereafter as a fellow in Denver's Office of Accountability and Reform, to his last as Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Mayor, Brendan commended himself to the residents of Denver and the financial stability of our city. And whereas Brendan led work to integrate equity into the heart of the budget process, ensuring that every budget proposal considered impacts and benefits to communities of color, First Nations people, and other under-resourced residents and abilities, including making processes available to people in multiple languages and inaccessible formats. Whereas Brendan led the largest community outreach efforts ever undertaken by the Department of Finance, engaging thousands of residents in the process of developing GO bonds, prioritizing the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding, and launching the city's first participatory budgeting process. Whereas Brendan helped navigate city finances successfully during the Great Recession and its recovery, as well as the COVID-19 economic recovery, helping to build an inclusive, sustainable economy that works for everyone, and whereas Brendan helped maintain the city's AAA general obligation bond rating across all three agencies, the highest achievable bond rating for governments and companies for the last decade, affirming Denver's strong and sound financial management. And whereas Brendan issued $10.4 billion of bonds to build and improve multitudes of capital projects all over the city, creating jobs and opportunities that improve the well-being of Denver residents. And whereas Brendan has tirelessly championed the importance of employee-driven continuous improvement as a cornerstone of good government, introducing the idea of process improvement training and being a founder of the nationally recognized Denver Peak Academy. And whereas Brendan was instrumental in establishing the Affordable Housing Fund and Lincoln Chief Fund, which together will create or preserve 6,000 affordable homes for low-to-moderate income families. And whereas Brendan was a crucial partner in passing the city's minimum wage ordinance, which addressed wage inequity and provided much-needed support for tens of thousands of Denver residents. And whereas Brendan was a driving force behind the passage of ballot initiative 2A in 2012, removing the Tabor restriction in the city and allowing the city to pay for improvements to police, fire, streets, Denver Public Library, parks, after-school and summer programs for children. And whereas Brendan was the mastermind of every creative solution to every financial problem the city faced. And whereas now that his commitments to the city will no longer require long nights and weekends, Brendan will now be able to enjoy more time with his beautiful family, wife Erica, their three children, Finn, Cassidy, and Bridgette, at least until the commute starts. And whereas Brendan left the city and county of Denver a better place for the community and city employees, and whereas there will always be an echo of Brendan's laughter in the hallway he leaves behind, reminding us we can serve with grace and kindness even in the midst of great challenges. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver, Section 1, that the Council of the City and County of Denver honors and thanks Brendan Hanlon for his remarkable service to the city of Denver. Section 2, that the Clerk of the City and County of Denver shall attest and affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation, and copies be delivered to Brendan Hanlon.
Thank you, Councilmember Black. Your motion to adopt?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt Proclamation 22-0878.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Black?
Thank you. I can't believe that you started here in 2002 because you don't look that old. I don't know. What's your secret? Brendan, that proclamation really said it all. You are so valuable to this city, and I know everyone who works for the city was devastated when we learned you were leaving. However, we know you are leaving the city in very good hands with your team sitting right there. So know that we are happy with our new leadership, but you really saw Denver through so many good times and bad times and found so many great solutions, and you really have been such a great leader and a friend to everyone, and always kind and cheerful, and everyone appreciates that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Ortega?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to just, first of all, thank Councilwoman Black for bringing this forward. And Brendan, just echo your praises for the incredible work that you have done, especially during COVID, some real challenging times, and, you know, think we were all grateful to have some additional resources to work with, but trying to figure out how to manage all of that and, you know, where to appropriate those dollars. But I want to just thank you for being a friend, for being a friend to council. Whenever we had tough questions, you were always here or in committees to answer those questions. You always did it with amazing grace and just a willingness to be transparent and open with the public around, you know, the use of taxpayer funds for all the different services and programs that the city does. And I just want to thank you for just your years of hard work and dedication to the city and to the taxpayers. And I know you're going to have some big shoes to fill, but you've got a great successor that will be stepping in. And just want to wish you all the best as you move on to the next chapter of your life. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
Thank you, Madam President. Brendan, wow. The last two years, serving in my previous role as council president and working very closely with you and your team, I can't say thanks enough. We also, at that same time, in the middle of a pandemic, more, we dug into the budget process quite a bit more, and so that took a bit more time to do that work, and you were always right there with your entire team to help make sure that we were getting those questions answered that council had, and that the entire process was geared towards city council's budget priorities and the vision that we're bringing forward from our constituents. And so want to say a sincere thank you, and hopefully we will get to work with you a bit more in your new capacity as well. And so congratulations on that as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Kneech?
Thank you so much, Council President. I am really sad about this, honestly. I know we're supposed to focus on you, but just a moment to feel my feelings. But to move to you, I think, you know, maybe with the exception of one other agency, I've probably worked more closely with you over the last 11 years than any other single individual in the city. Certainly, probably more than any individual, maybe not the agency. I chaired FinGov for a couple of years, and, you know, just two pieces I want to just thank you in particular for. One is, you know, you're very protective of the city's finances to the benefit of the stability the city has, the bond ratings, the reserves that we've had to use during times of emergency, in all the ways that someone in your position should be and must be. And so that is a credit to the city. But you have also been willing to stretch out and sometimes break what have been traditional rules where the city needs to evolve. And, you know, was not, you know, there's a lot of policies that are widely known and make front-page news, like having a housing fund. But what isn't always known is the types of, you know, kind of sacred cows that have to get taken on. You know, there was a feeling when we started talking about a housing fund that you should never tie up revenue for a future administration, that flexibility had to be the key. And it was a stretch for the city to dedicate revenue to a particular source that, you know, other than developmental disabilities mill levy, there weren't a lot of things like that in the city. And you not only, you know, came to the table as a thought partner, but you also helped us, and Carrie Kennedy probably gets some credit too, to think about the one-of-a-kind, weird use of our to-be, debruising powers to find a mill levy. You know, no other city could replicate that because no other city lives in our terrible state of Tabor with this weird property tax replacement cap that we put in. No one even knows what I'm talking about, and that's in part why you're so brilliant, because you found a way for us to identify funds, and they're real dollars paid by real residents and business and property owners in Denver, but you found a way to do it creatively without the cost of an election within the law and within the voter's intent, right? And so, you know, funding for transportation, we, you know, never set that aside before, and you helped us to really think about creative ways to do it. And so both for being protective, but also for evolving and being creative, right? That combination is really, I think, behind some of the legacies that we'll leave behind from this era. And I think maybe you were the youngest CFO or youngest budget director when you were appointed, I seem to remember. So it's not just perception, you really is, you really is younger than most of his peers across the country. So, and I know the cost of doing all that with kiddos. And so, and we've seen each other in the community with our kiddos trying to juggle phone calls, texts, and parenting. So, so to your family, I'm sure they'll appreciate a little bit different schedule that you'll be hopefully getting with your transition. And, you know, my deepest thanks for the legacy that you leave behind, as well as for the service you did while you were here. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. As with my friend Councilwoman Kneech, I don't do real well with these changes that I don't particularly like. I obviously wish Brendan the best in a new opportunity. I'm sure it'll be great for him and his family. I believe our dollars will be in good hands with the team he'll turn things over to, but I just, I don't like it, you know? So I will miss you. Numbers are not my highest skill, and Brendan would several times be in my office, and I would ask him a question, and I have a whiteboard, and he would get up and start writing bar graphs and pie charts and formulas, and I'm waving my hands like dumb this down. Bring it down. And he would find a way to explain it to me. And Councilwoman Kneech, I don't doubt your facts, but everybody says Brendan is so young. I thought everybody knew we were in the same class in high school. So, you know, I think we need to verify the facts. I know you want the numbers to be correct before you leave. And, but yeah, thank you for your work. You really have been a pleasure to work with. And while, I always admire people that can maintain something that I think is really missing in our country right now, where maintaining a good spirit about disagreements and present yourself in a way that doesn't demean opposing views on complex items. So, thanks. Going to miss you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. So Brendan, we can tell you're no longer with the city. You don't wear a jacket to come to council anymore. I want to echo what everyone else has said, but also add that when I came into office, my predecessor, Councilwoman Fox, told me that I would find you to be one of the most go-to people in the city for the types of questions that Council District 2 is known to be asking. And that has always been true, and you and your staff have always come through for us, for me and for other members as well, with accurate, with objective analysis, and we very much appreciate that. And I guess that's really all I could add to what else has been said, but I would echo what everyone else has already said up here as well. And good luck in your new position.
Thank you. Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, you go this deep in the rotation than everybody already said what you were going to say, and so I will echo what everyone else said and just say thank you so much for your partnership and for all of your help. Unlike Councilman Cashman, I love digging into the numbers and feel like I'm just dangerous enough with them that I might know what I'm talking about. And despite that, you always knew more than I did in those conversations. You never made me feel like I didn't get it or I was missing something in a way that was anything other than helping walk me through which parts I was missing or what I was, or nodding your head while I went off about some part of the numbers that I thought I was right on until you casually pointed me back in the right direction. And I appreciated that space to be able to ask those questions and feel like I would be heard, and also that I would learn as I was going along and could always go to you with that. So I really appreciate everything that you've done. You know, huge loss for the city, and I'm sad about that, but if you have to leave the city and you had to pick one place to go, I'm a big fan of where you're choosing to go. So congratulations. You will be missed, and I'm excited for you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Heinz?
Thank you, Council President. I know this was called out for comments. I'd like to call this out for a vote. I think if there was a vote, I don't think that you'd get the opportunity to leave, but I, I'm going to miss you. And I'm, as a numbers person who's happy to talk numbers, I've had lots of, lots of conversations where I was able to stretch those, you know, stretch that part of my brain, and I just want to thank you for that. And lucky you, we don't get to vote on it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Herndon?
Thank you, Madam President. Brendan, you know, I would just say if I could describe you in a word, it would be professional. And because there have been highs and lows, and you have always been steady. Whether we would ask things that would be defined as no worse than outlandish, crazy, or no, we would never do that as a city, you were always professional in your responses, even at times when we as a body were not to you and your team. And so for that, I want to thank you for always being the example that at times we failed to live up to, but I sincerely wish you the best of luck, and you will sincerely be missed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Brendan. Madam Secretary, roll call. No, sir, no, you cannot. If you would like to leave the chambers, you may. Thank you. Have a nice day, Mr. Bailey. Bye, Mr. Bailey. Thank you. Brendan, you can't spend 20 years somewhere and not get some enemies and friends. So, Madam Secretary, roll call. Black?
Aye.
Seeta Baka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. 13 ayes. 13 ayes. Proclamation 22-0878 has been adopted. We have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance. Councilmember Black will start the five-minute timer. Please call up whoever you'd like to accept this proclamation.
Brendan Hanlon? Would you like to come up and accept this proclamation?
You ought to know your way up by now, Brendan.
Good evening, Brendan Hanlon, former city employee. Thank you all for this proclamation. It means a lot to me. The 20 years I've spent with the city has been an incredible, incredible time. The city has treated me so well, and I've been able to do so many impactful things with all of you, with many of your predecessors, with previous mayors, with this mayor, executive directors. This finance team is incredible and will continue to be incredible. I just want to just say I really, really do appreciate the opportunity I've had, from an associate analyst working on the police budgets to CFO and deputy mayor. It has been an incredible opportunity, and I will not forget some moments that I have experienced here. But I, it's, what I always think back on are those toughest times that we have all had collectively, and that's what I'm most proud of. We didn't always agree, but like many of you mentioned, there was always the phone that was available, and we would disagree on the phone, and we would disagree here in this chamber, and that was okay because we got to the right answer for the people of Denver. And that was always the most important thing for me, and I think for all of you, and the mayor, and all of our predecessors, executive directors. And with that, I just want to close with thank you for this honor. I also want to make sure that I thank my team, my Department of Finance team, all the executive directors, all the things that you listed out there. It's very humbling for you all to list that out, but it took all of us, it took all of us to do that. All of you, finance team, mayor, executive directors, hundreds of city employees. So I definitely cannot take credit for all of that, but it was an honor to be a part of, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Councilmember Cashman, will you please read Proclamation 22-0879?
I will be pleased to, and it was very impressive to honor Brendan for his 20-year career. Now let's get down to some real history here. This is proclamation number 22-0879, honoring the Dyer family and Bonnie Bray Tavern for 88 years of service to the community. Whereas, in 1933, Carl and Sue Dyer bought property on the western edge of the Bonnie Bray subdivision on a then dirt road named University Boulevard. And whereas, the Dyers first opened a gas station on their land and then early the next year added a frame structure for a restaurant at 740 South University Boulevard. And whereas, Carl and Sue opened the Bonnie Bray Tavern in June 1934 in the midst of the Great Depression and barely seven months after the repeal of prohibition. And whereas, the tavern developed a widespread reputation for serving a hearty selection of home-cooked comfort food, including their namesake pizza, as well as a full menu of classic adult beverages. And whereas, the Dyer's son, Michael, joined the business in the 1940s, and son Hank followed suit in the 1950s. And as the founders aged, they turned tavern operations over to their boys. And whereas, continuing the family tradition, after growing up working at the restaurant themselves, Hank and Michael's sons, Ricky and Michael Jr., eventually took over the business from their parents and ended up working at the tavern 44 and 40 years respectively. And whereas, having served Denver families great comfort food and drink through the 1930s, 40s, 50s, 60s, and the heyday of the 70s and 80s, when there was an hour wait for dinner on the weekends, as Denver grew, along with more and more options for Denver diners, operating a Denver restaurant in a nearly 100-year-old building became more and more challenging. And whereas, on June 6th, Bonnie Bray Tavern celebrated 88 years in business. And whereas, after almost nine decades in business, the Dyer family has decided to move on to new challenges and turn the property over to new ownership and new uses, closing the tavern doors forever on June 25th. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver, Section 1, that the Council of the City and County of Denver declares July 25th, 2022 to be Bonnie Bray Tavern Day in Denver, and thanks the entire Dyer family and their staff for providing 88 great years of fun, food, drink, and community to generations of South Denver residents. In Section 2, that the Clerk of the City and County of Denver shall attest and affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation, and copies be delivered to the Dyer family.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman. Your motion to adopt?
Yes, Madam President, I move the proclamation number 22-0879 be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Cashman?
Yeah, 88 years is just stupendous. I mean, Brendan's career of 20 years, that's a long time. That's a long time. Before I ran for council, I spent 36 years running a neighborhood newspaper, which is where I met the Dyer family. And that was the bulk of my adult life. It was a huge part of the lives of my children. You've got that same thing repeated about three or four times with the Dyer family, generation after generation, spending their whole lives in this business. And the unique part of it is they were providing, I mean, good food, great pizza, you know, but a place for community to exist and to develop, and for friends to meet, you know, the classic diner, whatever you want to call it. You know, when I first moved to Denver from Englewood, we moved into a house on Virginia Avenue across from Wash Park, and it was a long day of moving, and we were exhausted, and went over to Bonnie Bray Tavern. Friend recommended go over to the tavern, get some food, and we did that. And that was my first meal there. My son Pete worked for Ricky for a little while. When I was, on election night in 2015, where are we going to go to have an election night party? We were at the tavern, and fortunately, it was a happy night all around. And there have been plenty of days and nights there since that time. And the day before it closed, I was running around, too busy to stop for a meal, but had to just stuck my head in the screen door and looked around one more time. And it's just such a gift for the community. And I don't know, I think we got three generations, is it four, sitting there now? And I just want to thank you all most sincerely for just being there. Couldn't wish you any more the best in wherever life takes you from here. But yeah, thanks, thanks a lot to the Dyer family.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to thank you, Councilmember Cashman, for bringing this forward.
I wanted to thank you, Councilmember Cashman, for bringing this forward. This was such a special place for so many people, me included. I grew up just a couple blocks away, and my childhood is peppered with memories. I think tonight we should probably also consider a proclamation for whoever you got those teal-blue booths from. I don't know if they were there for all 88 years, but they were there. Longest-running upholstery proclamation, I think, should come to whoever did those. Again, CM, I can, you know, it's one of those experiences where I can close my eyes and I can smell the place, I can feel the place, I can see the place. And my childhood is peppered with, you know, celebrations and end of soccer seasons back when they actually let us play youth soccer at Wash Park, and we'd come up after the season and have our parties there. And spent, you know, so much of, so many times in my childhood, growing up there as a place my family would go. And then got to create a second set of memories for me at that place as an adult because a good friend, a gentleman I worked with, Jeff Shoemaker, like many, many people in the city, laid claim to a booth that was their booth. I always wondered how many people also claimed Shoemaker's booth as his own. A couple times when I walked in, when someone was in his booth, and he would just be staring them down from the bar, waiting for them. And I know that, you know, it was a very special place for him and stood in a place of transition in his lifetime, and so I got to spend a lot of time in there, you know, getting to know Shoemaker's booth and his view. So, just really one of those places that, the doors may have closed, but it will be a place that as long as those of us who spent time there, as long as it lives in here, it will be an institution in a part of Denver for many, many, many years because of what you all and your family gave to our city in creating one of those special and iconic places that lives beyond its physical doors. So, thank you, Councilman Cashman, for bringing this forward, and thank you to this family for everything that you did for my family and so many other people in this city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call. Cashman?
Pizza, please. Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Seeta Baka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Proclamation 22-0879 has been adopted. We have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance. Councilmember Cashman will start the five-minute timer. Please call whomever you'd like to come up to accept the proclamation.
Yeah, I see about 1,000 Dyers back there, and someone would like to come up?
I'd like to thank everybody for the proclamation. My comments will be short, and I won't be as saucy as the guy that just stormed out of here, but...
And if you could introduce yourselves.
Anyway, I'd also like to thank my children, Chris and Patrick, and my daughter Theresa, who's not here, for working for 20 years and helping us stay open.
Hmm? Thirty.
Thirty, sorry. Time flies, you know. But thank you very much.
Thank you all. Mr. Cashman, known you so many years, and so many faces back here, we waited on for years. It's a hard one. We were cleaning out this week and giving up our keys on Friday, so it's kind of a hard one. But my family, those crazies that are sitting with me back here, we did it together, and it was, it was good. Our fathers and my grandma and grandpa would be proud, so I hope anyway. Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you.
We have three public hearings tonight. For those participating in person, when called upon, please come to the podium. On the presentation monitor on the wall, you'll see your time counting down. For those participating virtually, when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, your screen will ask permission to allow us to promote you. Please accept the promotion. Once you accept the promotion, your screen will flash and will say, reconnecting to meeting. Please don't leave the meeting. You will be reconnected, and will need to turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. You'll see your time counting down at the bottom of your screen. Once you have finished speaking, you'll change back to participant mode and see your screen flash one more time. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling council their names and cities of residence, and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home address. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note that you're available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you will be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. We will alternate between in-person and virtual for efficiency by calling in-person participants and then alternating to virtual. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to the council members. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech. Direct your counsel, your comments to council as a whole, and please refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilmember Ortega, will you please put Council Bill 22-0637 on the floor for final passage?
Let me turn that on. I move that Council Bill 22-0637 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-0637 is open. May we have the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Libby Adams with Community Planning and Development, and I'll be presenting the MAP amendment at 4710 North Stewart Street. This application is located in Council District 1 in the Berkeley neighborhood, and the applicant is requesting to rezone from USUC to USUC 1 to allow for an accessory dwelling unit. As stated previously, the current zoning is urban single-unit C, which allows the urban house building form on a minimum zone lot size of 5,500 square feet. The existing land use is a single-unit home, and this slide shows the existing building form and scale with the subject property on the upper right-hand side. A postcard notifying neighboring property owners was sent out on March 24th, and then the planning board unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning on May 18th, and to date, staff has not received any comments from members of the public. The Denver zoning code has five review criteria that must be met in order for rezoning to be approved. The first is consistency with adopted plans, and there are two plans that are applicable to this rezoning. You can find more information on how this rezoning meets the strategies of the comprehensive plan in the staff report, so I'll just focus on Blueprint Denver. So, the future neighborhood context in Blueprint Denver is urban, and then the future place type is identified as low residential, and these are areas where ADUs are appropriate. And then the future street type for North Stewart Street is local, and these are mostly characterized by residential uses, also consistent with the request. The growth area strategy in Blueprint Denver is all other areas of the city. This is where we anticipate to see 10% of new jobs and 20% of new housing by 2040. And then Blueprint also has specific policy guidance, so the land use and built-form housing policy 4 talks about diversifying housing choice by allowing ADUs throughout all of our residential areas. Staff also finds the rezoning meets the next two criteria: it will result in uniformity of district regulations, and it will further the public health, safety, and welfare by implementing our adopted plans and providing a new type of housing unit in a largely single-unit area. There's also a justifying circumstance in the adopted language in Blueprint Denver about ADUs in all of our residential areas. And then lastly, this proposed rezoning is consistent with the urban neighborhood context, the residential district's purpose, and then the specific intent of the USUC 1-zone district. So, finding all five criteria have been met, staff recommends approval of this rezoning.
Thank you, Libby. We do not have any speakers signed up to speak on this item this evening. Questions from members of council on Council Bill 22-0637? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-0637? Councilmember Sandoval, any comments?
No, just meet on guidance and hope my colleagues support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-0637. Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Seeta Baka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Council Bill 22-0637 has passed. Councilmember Ortega, will you please put Council Bill 22-0694 on the floor for final passage?
Madam President, I move that Council Bill 22-0694 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-0694 is open. May we have the staff report?
Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Fran Peña-Fiel, Senior City Planner with Community Planning and Development, and today I'm going to present your rezoning for 5101 Leedsdale Drive. The applicant is requesting to rezon from PUD 436 to ETUB. The proposed rezoning is located in Council District 5, which is Amanda Sawyer's district, and it is a vacant lot in the Washington-Virginia Ville neighborhood. The property owner, Augustana Lutheran Church of Denver, with Habitat for Humanity of Metro Denver, are proposing to rezon part of their property from PUD 436 to ETUB, which would allow for the development of four duplexes that they intend to sell to households making at or below 80% of the area median income. The proposed urban edge, two-unit B-zone district allows for the urban house, detached accessory dwelling units, duplex, and tandem house building forms. I would like to quickly note here that while the address for the site is on Leedsdale Drive, the main access to the property is on Dakota Avenue and in Fairfax Street. The next slides will illustrate better the slim, narrow access on Leedsdale Drive. You can see it there. The current zoning of the subject site is PUD 436. The PUD was adopted in 1997 and applies to a whole parcel, as shown on the map. It was intended to allow for the construction of a single building with 66 units for a special care home for senior citizens. It allows a maximum height for a building of up to 35 feet. The facility was supposed to be an extension of the Ministry of Augustana Lutheran Church, but financing was not secured, and the special care home was never developed. The PUD also allows for the development of uses allowed on R1 district, which is a predominantly single-unit district in former Chapter 59. The existing land use on the site is vacant. It's surrounded by mostly quasi-public uses, where the church is to the northwest, single-unit residential uses to the north, northeast, and east, and commercial retail uses to the south. While the subject site is currently vacant, the portion of the zone lot that is not being rezoned is currently being used as an informal open space and vegetable garden. This slide shows the existing context surrounding the subject site, with the proposed rezoning site on the top right. On the bottom right image, you can see the commercial uses just south of the site on Leedsdale. On the top right image, the existing informal open space and vegetable garden located just west of the subject site. Throughout the rezoning process, application notifications have been provided according to code requirements. Planning board recommended approval anonymously on May 18th. Since the staff report was published, we have received two letters of support, one from the Preservation of Residential South Hilltop Neighborhood Association, and one from a community member. Staff also received one letter in opposition to the rezoning that expresses concerns with the increased traffic and density. As you all know, there's five review criteria when analyzing the appropriateness of the request. The first criterion is consistency with adopted plans. There are two plans applicable to this rezoning. We have Comprehensive Plan 2040, and we have Blueprint Denver. The rezoning is consistent with several of the strategies in the Comprehensive Plan, and they can be found on the staff report. Now, looking at Blueprint Denver, the future neighborhood context is urban edge. Within this context, we find a range of uses from single-unit and multi-unit residential to commercial corridors and centers. As the rezoning would allow a variety of building forms in an urban edge setting, the proposed district is appropriate and consistent with the Blueprint Denver context description. The future place of this area is called Community Corridor, which typically provides some mix of office, commercial, and residential, and heights generally go up to five stories. Dakota Avenue and Fairfax Street are designated as local or undesigned streets, and Leedsdale is classified as a commercial arterial future street type. The proposed ETUB district is consistent with these descriptions because it is a residential district that allows for single-unit and two-unit uses, and it's intended to promote existing and future patterns of lower-scale, multi-unit building forms. The subject property is located within the community centers and corridors' growth area. These areas are expected to see 20% of new employment growth and 25% of new housing growth by 2040. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the growth strategy mapping this area. Blueprint also has policy language around rezoning properties from the former Chapter 59 zoning code and out-of-custom zoning, such as the site plan's specific conditions on the subject property. Therefore, staff finds that this proposed rezoning is consistent with Blueprint Denver. Staff also finds that the requested zoning meets the next two criteria: the rezoning will result in uniformity of district regulations, and it will further the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, primarily through its implementation of adopted plans and through improving design standards. Additionally, rezoning out a portion of PUD 436 will not have a negative impact on the remaining of the site, and development under the current PUD would still be possible. The rezoning would bring this property from former Chapter 59 zoning into Denver zoning code. Such a change is listed in the zoning code as an appropriate justifying circumstance. Lastly, staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the zone district purpose and intent of the ETUB zone district. Based on the review criteria, staff does recommend approval based on finding all review criteria has been met.
Thank you. We have six individuals signed up to speak on this this evening. We will begin with Michael Zumwalt. If you can reintroduce yourself when you come up, thank you.
Yes, hello, my name is Michael Zumwalt. I'm a resident of Highlands Ranch, Colorado, and my daughter and I have been members of Augustana Lutheran Church for over five years now. So, thank you for this opportunity to appear before you in favor of this proposal. For the past two years, I've been serving as the president of the congregation and chairperson of our church's governing body, or council. It's a privilege to stand here before you as a representative of my church, which has overwhelmingly shown its support for this initiative involving our undeveloped property to hopefully be used in a very small way to help alleviate the challenges to affordable housing that our city of Denver has been facing for some time now. In our partnership with Habitat for Humanity of Metro Denver, we feel strongly that we can contribute to making progress in this area of need, and as an added benefit, they have helped us build an even stronger relationship with our community through this initiative that we believe will be of benefit to everyone involved. Along with our church, this effort is greatly supported by our local councilwoman, Amanda Sawyer, the South Hilltop Neighborhood Association, which represents the neighborhood just east of our church, and several of our closest neighbors, one of whom actually has their house backing up to the lot that we are hoping to develop. So, as a member and representative of the Augustana Lutheran Church, I ask for your support of this rezoning effort to help alleviate the need for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker in chambers is Scott Kilgore.
Hello, my name is Scott Kilgore. I live at 435 South Forest Street, just around the corner from the subject property. I'm a board member of the Preservation of Residential South Hilltop I'm a board member of the Preservation of Residential South Hilltop Neighborhood Association, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the RNO and reiterate our support of this rezoning request as outlined in our letter of support. We feel that the current PUD zoning is not compatible with the neighborhood context and that the proposed ETUB zone district will result in a building form and scale that's much more similar to the surrounding homes, while allowing for a gentle increase in density. The proposed development will add new homes in an amenity-rich central neighborhood while cleaning up an underused parcel and fixing existing drainage issues at the site. We are excited that these for sale homes will be offered to buyers at our under 80% AMI. And applicant team has proven a willingness to collaborate with our neighborhood. We've had multiple points of engagement with them, and they have been very responsive to our feedback. We do not have a good neighbor agreement in place with this rezoning, but we feel confident that the applicant team will continue to engage with the neighborhood and be responsive to us. They've already agreed to a number of things in writing as described in our letter of support. This rezoning request only impacts part of the 5101 Leedsdale parcel that faces Dakota and Fairfax. And Augustana Lutheran Church and the applicant team has reiterated to the neighborhood multiple times that the remaining piece of the parcel will continue to be used as a park, and that will stay. Discussion among our members and board has been overall very positive on this rezoning. We had eight work members vote in favor of supporting this rezoning. Zero voted opposed, and one member did abstain due to the lack of response when voting electronically due to COVID. So yes, the Preservation of Residential South Hilltop Neighborhood Association urges city council to support this rezoning request. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anna Holquist?
Hi, I'm Anna Holquist. I'm the senior pastor at Augustana Lutheran Church. I've been there for six years, and I'm also a resident of Denver. In 2018, our congregation began to have this dream together, knowing that we owned this piece of very vacant, dilapidated property, and hearing from Interfaith Alliance at the time about the ways they were encouraging many different faith communities throughout the metro area to consider building affordable housing. Interfaith Alliance helped us begin to give shape to the dream of serving our community and neighbors in this very concrete way, using our property and our resources. We've been privileged to partner with Habitat for Humanity Metro Denver as the project has moved from dream to close to reality. We've also been privileged to receive support from the South Hilltop Neighborhood Association, as you hear, and from Council Representative Sawyer. Augustana is a congregation that is firmly planted in our Denver area. We've been at our present location in Hilltop since 1958. Our core values are worship, grow, and go. And that last word, "go," means to us that we are not turned in on ourselves, but that the purpose of being a faith community is to turn outward, to see what we can do to make the world a better place. We have a number of outreach ministries that connect us to our neighborhood and the metro area, but we're so excited to imagine these townhomes, the neighbors who will live there, and the way that we can play a small part of bringing decent, affordable housing to people who will call our neighborhood home. Our call as a faith community is to love and serve, and this is a wonderful way for us to be able to fulfill that call. I urge the council to support this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Cussera?
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Kim Cussera, and I reside near this location, and I'm here tonight to support this zoning. I have been so impressed by the work between the community, Habitat, and Augustana. It's a great model to see people really welcoming affordable housing in our neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood with wonderful schools, beautiful parks, transit, and it's the perfect place for affordable housing. This also meets the criteria for a rezoning, and I'm hopeful you will support it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Whitaker?
Good evening, council. My name is Corey Whitaker. I live in Lakewood, and I lead the real estate team with Habitat for Humanity of Metro Denver. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about our application to rezone. So back in 2009, Habitat formed a partnership with Augustana Lutheran Church to execute the vision that you heard of using some of their property to address that critical need for affordable homeownership in Denver. The rezoning request before you tonight is one step in making that vision a reality. I'm going to talk a little bit about how we arrived at that zoning designation that we're asking for and how it meets the approval criteria. Habitat approaches all of its developments balancing three things. We balance affordability, which is key to what Habitat does and it's key to our mission, livability, this really speaks to creating a functional and successful development for those who are living in it, and neighborhood context. We want to respect and we want to respond to the surrounding character. Habitat and Augustana are proposing to rezone a portion of their property from PUD to ETUB to develop four duplexes for a total of eight homes. The TU Zone District, our two-unit, allows for that duplex building form, which fits that urban edge context that this area is in. And it's a more efficient building type to build, so one step in helping us make these homes more affordable. These homes will be three and four bedrooms in size, with one dedicated off-street parking space per home, as well as one reserved space in the adjacent Augustana parking lot. The additional space per home is being provided by Augustana to help alleviate some of the concerns from the neighbors about an increase in street parking along Dakota. The homes will also respond to the surrounding context by being two stories in height with pitched roofs and a mixture of siding materials. As part of our continued dialogue with the RNO, Habitat has agreed to bring the building design to the RNO for comment prior to submitting for permit. The rezoning request also meets all the required criteria, including aligning with the goals of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, such as develop housing that is affordable to residents at all income levels, goals in Blueprint Denver 2019, such as expanding family-friendly housing throughout the city, and it is consistent with the urban edge neighborhood context as outlined in Blueprint Denver. I would like to thank Augustana for having this vision. I would like to thank the RNO for being receptive and supportive of this project, and I would urge you to approve this rezoning. Affordable homeownership is a critical need in Denver, and this development is one small step in addressing that need. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to our Zoom platform for Heather Lafferty. Heather, if you would accept the promotion, we can bring you into the panel.
Well, greetings, city council members. Thank you for allowing me to join this evening virtually. My name is Heather Lafferty, and I live in Denver's first district, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of Metro Denver and our project proposal in partnership with Augustana Lutheran Church. I know many of you have worked with Habitat or are certainly familiar with our work. We have built and repaired hundreds of homes across the metro Denver area. I should say, across Denver. And we continue to seek opportunities to be innovative, to find new ways, to find land and to build homes so that more and more people have the opportunity to have a good, safe, decent, and affordable place to call home. Habitat supports and advocates for policies that expand our housing affordability, and just want to take a moment to applaud city council for the work that you have done in this arena. We appreciate that you are trying to find ways to help address the lack of affordable housing. And support for this rezoning tonight is one step towards that. Not only do we think this is a great project, we think that it is a unique collaboration between a church, a neighborhood, and a nonprofit developer like Habitat to find new ways to create the most needed, much-needed affordable housing in our community. So we hope this will serve as a model. And many of the speakers before me have talked about all of the benefits of this, so I won't repeat those, but just want to take the opportunity to say, you know, this is exactly what we need in our community. We're grateful for the community's support. We're grateful for the imagination that the congregation at the church has, and certainly for city council's support as we have moved this forward. Encouraging quality infill development that's consistent with neighborhoods like the Hilltop area is a great way to get housing accomplished. So thank you for considering this rezoning tonight, and I do urge you, we always would love a unanimous yes in support of this project. Thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of council on Council Bill 22-0694? Councilwoman Ortega?
Thank you, Madam President. Libby, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. First, it looks like access off of Leedsdale is primarily off of Dakota. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any other access to the remaining part of the land off of Leedsdale? Or will there be access off of Dakota? Because it looks like only part of the PUD is being rezoned, right?
Yeah. So, I can show you a slide if it helps, but there is a street, it has a lot of, it's very steep, and that's the connection that comes from Leedsdale. So it's like a, it's a dirt road right now. So there's going to be no connection there. My instinct is that when the PUD, like back in 97, when they did that project, that was planned to be like the connection to Leedsdale. Not anymore. Like the access now is going to be, and you can see it here. I have an image that shows where the access is. Here you can see Dakota. So it's this image on the right. So you can see that it's like direct access to the townhouses. It's going to be there.
Okay.
Fran, can I just jump in for a minute to answer that question as well? So the access from Leedsdale, it's only about 11 feet wide. It's a very weird-shaped parcel.
It looks that way.
Right, exactly. And it's an incredibly steep hill. So there's, and with the drainage challenges and the infrastructure that would have to be built out, there is no way to make it, make an entrance or an exit up that hill. It has a lot to do with flooding water flow and stuff like that. I could get really nerdy on you, but I'll spare you. So that's, so the entrance is going to be on Dakota and Fairfax, which right now is just an L that ends in this empty parcel. And then the Augustana parking lot is right there.
So access is then partially on this site or adjacent to it? So we're not, just trying to understand that. I see my colleague has a map up right now of the property, looking at it.
Corey, I don't know if you have any info on this as well?
Because it, part of the reason for asking the question is it looks like at some point the remainder of the vacant land can be available for development, but access to it seems very limited from Leedsdale. And then the access from Florida, sorry, not Florida, Dakota.
So prior to submitting for the rezoning, we submitted for concept plan, and we worked with Dottie specifically on the corner of Dakota and Fairfax. And Dottie approved kind of a T intersection right there for a future entrance onto the PUD property. So if the PUD was ever to be developed, there is an entrance from Dakota and Fairfax onto that property.
Okay, I see it on this graphic. Thank you, Libby. And if you need this back, happy to give it back to you. So I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about how many units can be on the site?
So I think the plan, Corey, is four units. And again, so it's, yeah, four duplexes, so you're DA units.
Okay. And then, so I think we clarified the questions off of Dakota. So I think that's all I have. So I appreciate you helping me understand what that access looks like and the fact that there will continue to be opportunity for development of the remainder of the PUD site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kneech?
Thank you so much. You probably said this and I missed it, but I didn't see it in the PowerPoint when I bent back to look. So I'm really excited about the affordability. Is there an agreement with host to do this as an alternative? Or they will just satisfy the ordinance at the time? How are we dealing with the current and/or future ordinances that'll be in effect when they pull the building permit?
So there's no agreement? I mean, Habitat is doing 100% affordable housing, and that's because they're working with the church and they own it. But there's no good neighbor agreement, there's no...
Yeah. So 100% affordable homes are exempt from the ordinance? So you're just, are you plan, do you want to just answer? Are you planning to just state that exemption at the time of building permit? Okay. For the record, there's a nod from the back row. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. Fran, I'm curious to just follow up on Councilwoman Ortega's questions, being a map geek myself. What is the purpose of the remnant that runs along the south side of this parcel rezoning? Because it seems to me it would have no utility at all. As Councilwoman Sawyer pointed out, it's a steep hill. But it's still part of the PUD, but it looks, it dead-ends at a private property line. So it looks like it has no independent utility at all. Why would that not be included in the rezoning?
Honestly, we had the same question at Planning Board. So it's good eye noticing that it's very steep, as you say. It's very steep, it's not really developable. And the applicant proposes like an area that they want to develop, and that's the area that we look at. We talked about like redeveloping the whole site. We talked about going all the way to the south, but it didn't make sense because they just, that's the area that they wanted to build the townhouses, and we looked at it, and because it's so steep on the south, we figured it doesn't really matter. So the part on the south is going to stay part of the rest of the PUD.
Would someone from the church be able to answer what future plan for the rest of the PUD might incorporate that little strip? Is there... Do we have an outlook for development of the rest of the property? Because it still is under the old PUD that is very, very highly specific and particular.
It is. So when we looked at the property, there is a very steep slope. I think it's about 20 feet. That stretches along the, further than the portion that we are rezoning. So when we looked at what we needed to rezone, the parcel lines worked without including that. And since that feature kind of ran along the entire property, we felt like it was best to exclude it from what we were rezoning. Because at some future time, they might be able to redevelop that entire property. Now, I don't want to speak for behalf of the church, but currently, the property is a park. It is a privately-owned park, but it is open to the public, and the church has no intention of changing that use at the time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-0694? Councilmember Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. I just want to thank you guys so much. This is, it's so exciting. I'm so glad we're finally here. The first meeting that we had, or maybe it was the second meeting before they filed their application, was like three days before the COVID shutdown. And it looked like maybe this wasn't going to be able to happen after all, and there was a lot of challenges. The original hope on the site was to be able to build 20 units. And because of that, because of that crazy slope, it just can't be done. There would be, there would have to be retaining walls built and drainage. And like I said, I can infrastructure nerd out about it for you guys, but you don't need to hear the whole story. It's a shame that it is, that it is exactly that way because it is a fantastic plan. It is a fantastic location. And I wish you guys would have mentioned, but you didn't. So the congregation of Augustana Church actually voted on what to do with the land, and this is what they voted on. They wanted to develop this parcel to support families of middle-income earners in our community. And I don't know how many of you are aware, but Augustana has the most incredible after-school program and preschool programs. And so most of the community members around the Hilltop and South Hilltop and Crestmore areas have been in and out of Augustana at least 100 million times with their young kids. And so this is a really exciting opportunity for the community. It is consistent with the adopted plans absolutely and fits all of the criteria. And I just want to acknowledge the... And I just want to acknowledge the Neighborhood Association. They have been so wonderful and supportive. Of course, there are residents who had questions and concerns, and they were wonderful about, you know, going out, setting up Zoom meetings, asking questions, and just really getting back and forth with Habitat and with Augustana to see, you know, where those pain point issues were so that they could be worked out ahead of time. Just really, really excited. I think for those of you who might have missed it, this is, it could have been a 63-unit senior development. And so it's a downzoning. And that sort of left-hand section on the map that you saw where there is kind of nothing there, it looks like there's nothing there. But what's actually there is the most extraordinary, you know, park and community garden and area that is open to the public, even though it's private land. Augustana has been just extraordinary partners to the community for many, many, many years. And I don't know if you can tell, but I am super excited for this. So I can't support it strongly enough. I am so, you know, grateful for your partnership and for Habitat's partnership and for all that you guys have done. And I just, I'm so glad we're here tonight and so thrilled to get started. So let me know when we need some volunteers to get building for Habitat because I cannot wait. I'm really, really thrilled. This is just going to be such a wonderful thing for our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call. Council Bill 22-0694. Sawyer?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Seeta Baka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega? Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes? Thirteen ayes. Council Bill 22-0694 has passed. Councilmember Ortega, will you please put Council Bill 22-0804 on the floor for publication?
Madam President, I move that Council Bill 22-0804 be ordered published.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-0804 is open. May we have the staff report?
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Melissa Yannischewski. I'm the Executive Director for the Office of Children's Affairs. I am here today with our partners from Denver Preschool Program to ask for a change to the Denver Revised Municipal Code that would allow DPP to pursue other opportunities, including universal pre-K beyond disseminating the city's sales tax revenue. Our agency fully supports this code amendment and has absolute confidence in DPP's ability to continue its trusted partnership with the city while expanding its role in the overall early childhood landscape through contracts with the state and other entities. OCA and Denver Preschool Program have over a 15-year history of partnering together to bring affordable, high-quality preschool to Denver children and families. Since DPP's inception, the city has modeled multiple special revenue funds around DPP, and DPP has evolved to meet the needs of the city and its residents. DPP is well-positioned to serve as the local lead for the state's universal pre-K program, and OCA fully supports DPP stepping into this role. The implementation of universal pre-K in Denver will benefit from DPP's expertise and understanding of how to get funds to families and providers. And DPP will even be better equipped to support the development of an early childhood ecosystem that can serve more families. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We do not have any speakers signed up for comment to speak on this item this evening. Questions from members of council on Council Bill 22-0804? Seeing none. The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-0804? Councilwoman Sandoval?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm the appointed City Council member for the Downtown Denver Partnership, or the Denver Preschool Program. It has been an honor to serve with them. And this, two weeks ago, we had a board retreat talking about the need and talking about our priorities and talking about how we can prioritize more children and get more of our at-risk youth into this program. So I would just ask my colleagues to approve this. And thank you to the Downtown, to the Denver Preschool Program, sorry, I don't know why I have that in my head, for all of the work you do as a mom who experienced it for my two children. You provided preschool to my daughter and to my son. And in your, since you've been established, I don't think you've ever come before City Council to change anything. You've just been good stewards of our tax dollars and making sure that our four-year-olds have access to early education. And just want to recognize Anna Jo, thank you for being here. And thank you for your leadership in this early childhood education. We are all standing on your shoulders. And it's been a pleasure to serve on the board with you and get to hear from you and just get to learn your institutional knowledge. So just wanted to acknowledge you being here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortega?
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to add my, my support for this effort. Anna Jo used to run the Mile High Early Childhood Education that had locations across the city before it was taken over by, I can't even think of the new name. But anyway, my daughter attended one of those, one of those programs in North Denver. And she's still at it. And my daughter's already in her 40s, and Anna Jo is still working on this important issue. I also want to acknowledge the role that one of our predecessors, Councilwoman Sue Casey, played in this process. She's the one that had worked to move this issue forward to the ballot to encourage the voters to support this funding. She helped educate all of us about the importance of young, or young children, and especially our children of color, being able to start kindergarten at the same level as their peers. Because children who have the early childhood education compared to those who do not start out with about a 15,000-word vocabulary difference than the children who do not. And so it really matters being able to give our children this opportunity to be in these environments where they're learning and they're getting ready to start public education or private education in some cases. But it has made a huge difference. And it means that as they continue on through the other grades, they can be at par with their peers. Obviously, having access to healthy food and some of those other things is also equally as important. And we now have the Denver Healthy Food for Denver Kids program that is working with our Head Start programs as well to ensure that our kids are getting what they need, that families have access to food over the weekends and things like that in cases where we have, you know, food insecurity. So I just want to say thank you to Anna Jo, and Elsa, and your whole team for the work you all have done to bring this forward and for the ongoing work that you do in working with our families throughout the city of Denver. I know our neighboring jurisdictions are envious of this program and the fact that Denver taxpayers saw the value and benefit of all of our kids being given this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. That was comments. Sorry, lost my place in this girl. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-0804? Black?
Aye.
Seeta Baka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes? Thirteen ayes. Council Bill 22-0804 has been ordered published. On Monday, August 15, council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-0803 designating 1090 Cherokee Street as a structure for preservation. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.